Call meeting order, would everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you take a seat for your call vote, please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Obrich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincenta?
Here.
All members are present.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank everyone that's here tonight who attended the council meeting. Very welcome. We'll go with the first item on the agenda, the minutes. Is anyone will go first with the minutes for the August 15th meeting? Has everyone received their copy of the minutes for the August 15th meeting? Does anyone have any issues or questions with those? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to accept those. Thrash, Mr. Butler? Roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor, motion taken.
Okay, the August 16th minutes are officially the minutes of record. The next item is the September 1st minutes, which they'll do special meeting last Thursday. Did anyone not receive a copy of those? Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll accept the motion to accept those minutes. Let's take a vote on those.
Bob? Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor, motion taken.
Okay, minutes for the 15th and the 1st are officially the minutes of record. Okay, first thing we'll hit real quick, get it out of the way. There's been some questions, there's phone calls about the Halloween date. As people are kind of questioning, we had some confusion last year because Halloween was on a Sunday and there was some issues about it being on Sunday. And then they talked about backing the day up to Saturday, which conflicted with a high school playoff football game. And then there was problems with the play at the middle school. So there was some kind of controversy and question about when we were going to actually have Halloween. People were trying to make arrangements. I know Tara's received a few calls and I've received a couple of people wanting to know. I'm assuming that this point with the 31st normally is the date for Halloween, that that is a Monday. It's not going to create any problem. Does anybody have any comments on that date? Anybody have any problems with Halloween being on the 31st?
Do we need a motion?
They'll need a motion for the date and the time of Halloween.
At what time do we want to do it?
Normally, we do it 6:00 to 7:30.
But it's still light then, right? You change clocks mostly.
And police do not have a problem. Matt, do you have any problem with that date and time? Carry on with the position.
I'll make the motion that's in the absurd Halloween for people to trick or treat on Monday, the 31st, from 6:00 to 7:30.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Roll call vote, please.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Abstain.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
Five in the favor, please.
Okay, that will be the date for Halloween, the 31st, 6:00 to 7:30, Monday evening. Okay, next, we have a guest this evening. Our fire chief, Mr. Hall, is here this evening and wants to give us some update on some information. So Tim, you have the floor. If you would step up to the mic so that it can be recorded.
Sure, thank you. Shane, you mind grabbing that? Good evening, council, mayor, administration, and guests. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you about our conceptual design and programming for our main firehouse that was gifted to us by you. Our intent is to disseminate this information to you for transparency and hopefully obtain your support for the project and potential variances that may be needed for the renovation. I'd also like to introduce to you a few of the committee members that have been working on this project since early February. First, Assistant Chief Grady. Captain Curtis Skye. Lieutenant Jeremy Wright. Firefighter Shane Smolak. Firefighter Nick Jesse. And firefighter Alex Glazer. This project was originally started over seven years ago in 2015 to acquire the physical facility with the intent to remodel and add on. Chief Lance Rice recognized this then, and Chief John Slavik recognized this again in 2017. This project never came to fruition due to the inability to acquire ownership and to qualify for grant funding and/or low-interest loans. The building was originally constructed in 1978 to serve the St. Clairsville Volunteer Fire Department. This building has far surpassed its expectations, and the needs of the fire service have immensely changed since then. We're grateful to the late Chief Henderson and his vision at the time in 1978 that's enabled us to get this far with the facility. This building is where our members spent a third of their life making it their second home. A couple of things I'd like to highlight, is decontamination in 1978 was less of a concern. Therefore, the building was constructed with one unisex shower. Showering after suppression-related incidents is vital to a firefighter's physical health and reducing the length of time of carcinogen exposure. Currently, our firefighters share a common bunk room, that's sleep six. Statistical data has shown this increases sleep deprivation, along with creating an environment that colds and viruses can be easily spread from member to member. This is also a factor with privacy and overall physical and mental health for our men and women. Along with the shower and bunk room, the kitchen can't be utilized 24/7, 365 days a year, preparing food for up to nine firefighters. Our current kitchen isn't adequate for our firefighters. Training, excuse me, training has also vastly changed since 1978, especially with emergency medical services. We're wanting to create a better learning environment, and currently, we're sending employees elsewhere to meet training needs that we want to do internally with proposed community training room. You'll see what Daniel has. Along with the training, you may notice a proposed training tower that currently doesn't exist in Bama County. This training tower will pay for itself over time due to the increased scoring of insurance services office rating, which equates to the reduction of annual insurance premiums for district residents, residents, and businesses. The proposed community and training room will also serve as a tornado shelter and temporary cooling and warming center for residents in their time of need. This need was exposed and brought to the forefront through the recent ice storms in February. The estimated cost, the big question, the engineer cost of this project is $3.7 million. We have already had meetings with USDA for low-interest loans and are pursuing congressional dollars and state capital improvement funds. We intend to leave no stone unturned pertaining to grant funding. The Board of Trustees, our administration, and our employees understand this monumental undertaking while continually being mindful and good stewards of our tax dollars. The services our residents have become accustomed to receiving from CTFD will not suffer in any way during the remodel. The employees understand there will be inconveniences, but operations will continue from that building. We encourage residents to stop by the firehouse to view for themselves exactly what we're discussing. This proposal is not only for the benefit of our residents, but a necessity for the health and safety of our employees. Also, we have also met with Mr. Murphy. I would allow him to speak anything on the planning commission, the potential variances. Also, with Mr. Greenwood, like to thank him for all of this assistance to this endeavor and those council members that have attended and came and viewed the building prior to this getting to this point. So at this time, I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability if anyone has any.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hall?
Just have a comment. So thank you for bringing this to us. Should have gave you the building a long time ago. So apologies for not making it happen. Happy that it finally did happen and you can take these steps. So thanks for your transparency and bringing it to us.
Thank you for your support, really appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you again for everything you do. What kind of square footage you talking about then? What all you add on?
So it's easy for you to see, but I need to sit here and explain to you.
Do you have this like kind of table?
I can email you the PDF. I can email all the council, the administration.
If you just send it to Jacob or what, we're leaning it to you.
Absolutely.
Do you need to get the parking lot be next to that, or is it all going to be?
For full transparency, we tried to acquire the property to the south of us. It was open market. And our attempts failed. There is potential acquiring property behind us to the west. I don't know if that would come to fruition or not. We would like to, absolutely. Our parking is going to be limited because of this. We're kind of landlocked, but we're doing our best to.
So it's pretty much like all living, little bays around like that.
We're, as the warming center going to be, because the city was thinking about doing that.
It'll be on the first floor, ADA accessible.
Okay.
It'll be underground to meet the criteria to be a tornado shelter. And then obviously the building will have full generation backup. Yes, sir. And you've already met with the Red Cross to make sure we meet that criteria as well.
Thank you. And do we have, like, I know it's about getting loans and paying grants, but time frame?
Optimism is quick. We would like to put a shovel in the ground towards the end of next summer, by next summer. That's our goal. We want to finalize plans by end of this year and send out an RFQ into the beginning of 2023 for this place. This is just conceptual and program.
So $3.7 million, do we have any of that money yet?
Do we, we have some in our capital improvement fund internally, but not for the entire project.
So the best way we can be helpful to you is what?
While we pursue funding, letters of support for funding from elected officials and leaders, whether it's state or federal. And like I said, leaving no stone unturned when it comes to grant funding and those low-interest loans.
And I take it you'll keep us informed if there's something we can, like a specific letter, you'll let us know?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Good evening, thanks for coming this evening. I obviously can speak for council. I think, I don't think, while people do appreciate the fire and police department, I don't think sometimes they really understand how much they really do. And I know I speak for myself and I vote for council, but we really and truly do appreciate everything that you do and the risks that you take, and thank you very much.
I want to thank all of you for your time and for your support. Have a good evening.
Okay. Next thing under correspondence, we had a letter from the St. Clairsville City Council. I'm sorry, from the city student council with reference to Halloween, or thanks, homecoming parade on September. One more time.
Halloween, thanks, homecoming.
Anyway, thank you. Halloween.
Halloween holiday.
Okay, let's try this again. Got to keep things light, I guess. Okay, the date would be September 28th at 6:00 PM. The student council would like to have permission to have a homecoming parade and a bonfire at the school. Be around the area of the amphitheater, and if council would approve that. I don't know if Matt's got any issues with it or anything. The letter is basically, "St. Clairsville High School Student Council would like permission to have their homecoming parade and bonfire on Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. We would like your permission to start at the high school parking lot and make the loop around St. Clairsville, Main Street, and amphitheater, down to the amphitheater for the bonfire. If you have any questions, contact Sarah Meiser at 740-310-7700, or Ann Jeffries at 740-671-5995." Okay, we have a motion to grant that date. We have a second. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Our mission's red unanimously, 60 to 0. And obviously, I should write the letter to start with instead of trying to explain. Okay. The next item is a very short dedication requested. Should read this too. It's from the, let's see. It's Belco Works. They want to dedicate some trees down on the, this is an email, this is not really a letter. To dedicate some trees, 7:45 AM to 3:45 PM, Monday through Friday. If there is a problem, we can contact them. That they want to have a walk and a dedication on September 8th at 2022 at 5:00 PM. This is mainly to dedicate some trees down there to some of their past board members. I don't think they're going to be interfering with anything in the operation. Just general public using the bike trail, probably only be closed for a few minutes. And if anybody has any issues with that, anybody have any input on?
So this is in two days?
No, it's just, it would just be Thursday, September 8th at 5:00.
In two days.
In two days.
Oh, in two days. I thought you said for two days. No, it'd be able to be in two days. Can't hear either, apparently. Bad night.
Is anyone here from?
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like to, would you like to step up to the microphone and kind of explain that a little bit more?
I didn't have any, that's my boss. So I didn't even know that email was out there to you. We were just here for the DSP log. So I don't know how much I can contribute.
They've bought bronze plaques dedicated to board members. They've been doing that for years. There were two more that were bought and were placed down there at the bike trail by the gazebo. And we had some actual trees. If you noticed, they were the trees that were out in the planters last year. Those were taken down and planted, and those are going to be used as the dedication with their plaques.
Did the trees used to be at the amphitheater? And are there some still there?
No. Yes, there are some trees that are dedicated down at the amphitheater too with bronze plaques still there. The problem that we're running into with that is the lawnmowers with the bronze, they don't match you well. Yes, so we're trying to put a lot more at the bike trail. Yeah, that's where it was decided to put it down, is bike trail.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, I would suggest a motion.
I'd make the motion for this to happen. You need more specific information than that.
September 8th, 22, the dedication.
Make a motion to approve the dedication of Belco for trees with bronze plaques at the bike trail.
Seven.
On September 8th.
This is much tougher than it needs to be. Okay, would you take, we have a motion and a second. Nick, will you take a vote, please?
Yep, not much.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, dedication for the plaques and the trees on September 8th is approved.
Who were these ones? What board members were reiterating this topic?
This would be county board members from Snowdon County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I think one was Kirk.
I'm, I'm not sure who all they're honoring. I, I know I was just sent an email to attend. I'm sorry. I would definitely have more information out there that was coming up.
Jim, what time is this? What time?
It's at 8:00 PM.
8:00 PM?
Right. I'm sorry, 5:00 PM on the 8th.
No, I know.
Okay, to verify the date, it's September 8th at 5:00 PM on September 8th.
In two days.
In two days. Not, just in two days. Okay.
Been a long week.
It's getting longer. Take care of the correspondence, the citizens' hearing, and then do business, thank heavens. Okay, at this point, we will move on to our reports.
Yes, I do, and I have my two better jobs. Oh my God, I feel like one of those Dean Morton celebrity bros out on the line. But first of all, I would like to say thank you so much to the fire department and the first responders. You guys made my week to know that this is all planned, going to come to fruition. Because I remember talking to Chief Hall, and it's been probably a couple of years ago. And he said, you know, they've had the talk about maybe leaving downtown because they can't get the grants to fix up that building, and you know, we don't own it. And so, thank you, council, so much. Jeremy, I know you put a lot of work in this. Thank you so much. This is wonderful. And especially when you said the warming shelter, I'm like, thank you, God, because I remember last, last year at that ice storm, and I was at the police station several times. They were all out trying to take care of people. That was tough, so thank you, thank you, thank you, from the bottom of my heart. It's been another busy two weeks. I met last week with a gentleman named Mr. Jeff Masguy, and he does a film festival in Wheeling. And Jim Beal, Sue Devoy from Enchanted Sound, and Eric Gay from the rec department, we all met. And we're talking about doing a film festival in 2023 to give the kids as well as citizens an opportunity to do something to showcase their creative sides. And the festival we went to was 15-minute or under films. A lot of them were made by kids with their cell phones, obviously nothing obscene or bad, but they would submit it. And we've had some very generous donors donate a flat-screen TV for a prize, $500. So I would be talking to other sponsors. But this would be something to give us our own identity, something a little bit different. So that's in the works for next, next fall, probably. Let's see. And yeah, we're looking toward the, the end of summer for 2023. We don't want to interfere with football time, or you know, hopefully, kids will be back from school. So again, tell, tell the kids, start thinking what kind of short film they'd like to make. I sat in on several EPA meetings via Zoom with Jeremy, and I'm sure he'll be able to brief you on those. And we also met with Breen McNally and some union representatives for, for discussions this week, and those are still ongoing. We met with Elizabeth, our law director, to discuss and go over some of the city legal matters. We met with Wendy Anderson from the Chamber to discuss some of the upcoming fall events and coordinated street closings with Chief Arbans. I've got a printout to let everybody know what will be coming on this fall. And again, Chief has okayed it as far as closing the streets. We had mayor's court on Wednesday. We had two people no show, but we had several driving cases. I went to Zanesville on Friday. I was invited by their mayor and his wife to observe their margarita event. They had Jimmy Buffett band, lots of food trucks. I would talk to Eric, see if we could get something scheduled like that for next summer in St. Clair. So it was a lot of fun. We do have a Brews and Blues Festival this Saturday, going to be down at the amphitheater. That should be a lot of fun. I don't know who all the people are bringing craft beers. No, I know, but does it say who the refineries are? Four to six MSM, who is a really good band, will be there. 6:30 to 8:00, Taylor Joe and the Copper Creek Band. I've heard them, they're good too. 8:30 to 10:30, Juke Box, today's hits, which I won't know anything, but that's, I'll be up by then anyway. But it ought to be a lot of fun. Please support us and put the word out too for the Brews and Blues Fest. I've also got a proclamation I would like to read, and I thank our guests in the back for coming. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas direct support professionals are integral to the physical and mental health and well-being of veterans, senior citizens, and individuals of all ages with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas direct support professionals provide essential support to help keep individuals with disabilities connected to their family, their friends, their community, enable them to live meaningful lives in a community of their choice. And whereas a direct support professional must build a close, trusted relationship with an individual with disabilities, whereas a direct support professional assists an individual with disabilities with a broad range of support from preparing meals and medications to personal care, to employment support, and transporting clients to school, work, and other activities. Whereas there is a documented, critical, and growing shortage of direct support professionals in every community throughout the United States. And whereas direct support professionals, including direct care workers, personal attendants, in-home support workers, and paraprofessionals, are the primary providers of long-term support and services for millions of individuals and disabilities. Therefore, I, Catherine Tallman, Mayor of St. Clairsville, Ohio, do hereby proclaim September 11th through the 17th, 2022, to be Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week. I encourage all people of St. Clairsville to recognize and appreciate the dedication and contributions of these providers to enhancing the lives of their clients. Catherine Tallman, Mayor of St. Clairsville, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Very appreciative. And before I'm done, I'm not done yet, I have a couple of appointments to make. First of all, I want to announce that we have appointees for the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Mike Kleineck of St. Clairsville and Mr. Mark Summers have both agreed to be on the Civil Service Commission, and we're very appreciative to them for their willingness to serve. And last but not least, a mayor appointment for the Architectural Review Board. I'd like to appoint Jane Long of St. Clairsville to the Architecture Review Board. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely, thank you.
Do the nominee, do your appointments, do you confirm?
Okay, well, that was the very first one.
Yes, the civil service appointments, Mr. Mike Kleineck and Mr. Mark Summers. So I ask you to approve this.
One at a time.
Okay, Mr. Kleineck, Mike Kleineck, please.
And anybody motion for that?
Off the scratch, but I would.
I'll make it in the Donning time.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
The council roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Thank you. Thank you. And the next appointment is for Mr. Mark Summers to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, we need a.
I have a question about that. Are the terms up or the other?
Yes, they're already inspired.
Okay. We're going to have to have a test pretty soon.
Did they not want to?
I didn't mean to.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Summers?
I'll make a motion.
And a second? Roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
I'd like to approve Jane Long.
And I'll second that one.
And we're getting that right now. So the mayor appointment for the Architectural Review Committee. I'd like to ask that you approve the appointment of Jane Long, please.
I make the motion to approve Jane Long.
Second.
Second, roll call votes.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
And I'm in favor.
Jim?
I.
In the future, can we get names ahead of time of people? I mean, I respect your appointments, and I, I'm just voting blind, but I do respect your appointments and voting, yes. But it'd be nice in the future for you to see. I appreciate it.
Okay, that takes care of the appointments. Mayor, do you have anything else?
I'm done.
Okay, is anybody have any questions? Beth?
The fence about the dog.
They, they have started, have you looked at?
Yeah, I was there, I stopped out last weekend. That time, it was probably 50% complete, so it hasn't started.
They are working.
Anyway, I have a date anticipated.
Your date was, you had a date in your.
I had a month, and I have to look to ask Jen exactly what the date was, but we're getting pretty close to it. And they will start currying five.
If it's not too much trouble, you could ask Jen to let me know, like, when that date is and the next time that you go, Tom. I know you keep on top of that, just to. So I'm following that up. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for the mayor? Okay, we'll move on. Mr. Greenwood, do you have a report this evening?
Uh, no report tonight.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Greenwood?
I'm rendered speechless. No report, Jeremy? Okay.
What are we saying on repairs on the hydrants?
Hydrants, uh, we're trying to get the distribution project out. One of the things that was discussed here, our $7 million water project. We had another budget done for it. It's now 12.9 million. So we're doing some redesign. It was supposed to actually be out to bid today. We're pumping it back a month. It will be out to bid next month with a obviously reduced scope.
Just South Park, I know that we're, you know, kind of.
Still sitting.
Still sitting? Are we?
There's actually another grant that's out there that we're thinking about going after. So it's one-for-one match. If we actually took the 50 that we had budgeted for, we could have another 50 for the project. It could do a couple more things. Working with Eric on that one and reverting to the city.
Actually, we painted. Eric went down and painted the lines. And there's a bunch of basketballs down there. If kids really wanted to play. I mean, I went down. There's no reason they couldn't be there playing basketball now.
The kids do go down there and play. It's just that it's so torn up that.
It isn't that bad. I mean, when I grew up, we played on the gravel road. If the ball could have rocked or bounced, but it's all right. No, they could, but it's still definitely on the books.
And what, just as the year, sorry, just so as the year, we're just continuing to figure out with the increased cost, things, what we can and can't do.
I have two bills.
Still, stills on the list.
Everything's still on the list right now, but I have two bills for traffic control for $16,000.
And that's going to continue, I guess, until the state finishes their project on the interstate. Because we can't reduce that without traffic control on reservoir rib for that water line. So we're looking, what, about 8,000 a month? About 8,000 a month till the state's done with there. So that's money that apparently we had not anticipated having dispensed. Mike?
But Jeremy, we're still waiting on our report of engineers, though, right? And they need to get in there and do some work.
For South Park? South Park? They've never contacted us yet.
But that mean, we're still waiting on them?
Still waiting on them, too, yeah.
Right, okay.
But it's almost to the point that we're probably going to move on. Okay, but it's still money.
Is that who was originally going to do this, or is that just, okay, the?
That was the person that you were going to call.
That's who was originally going to do it, yes, when you first had that 50, that?
Did you talk to her like that? Talk to her?
No, 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 no. After he said he met with him, I didn't, you know, I just thought that he was going to.
Yeah, we fell with him.
And it's been longer than that.
Two months, yeah, time flies.
The $7 million to 12.9 million, what's the jump on that? Where's?
Everything, pavement costs, grass fittings, the reconnection to all the curb boxes was over $1 million alone for all the residents.
Increase?
A total. It was probably up $500,000. So all went up.
So what's, what's our?
We're reducing the scope.
Were we cutting? Were we?
We're reducing the scope as much as we can. We've got a plan to get it down to about 7.6. So back down to where it was, but obviously the amount is going down.
Mind if I stop in one day?
I don't have revise drawings yet, but you can, I can send you what I've got. It's just the budget. I mean, it was just literally, yeah. So.
As best I understood it, is when this project for the water distribution system was first proposed, this was the estimated cost that was going to make everything that needed to be done, including supply hydrants and things. In the time of a year, a year and a half, when everything progressed and we got $5 million from the state. In the meantime, we originally thought we were going to get $5 million to do a $7 million, almost $8 million project. We were going to come up with three. Now, because of the cost of everything, the seven has gone to almost 13, 12, nine, something. And unfortunately, our 5,000 didn't go up, so that's where we're unfortunately not going to be able to do as much as we wanted to do. Unless, I don't know.
No, that's right. So we're going to have to reduce the scope. We'll spend the money, but it's not going to go as far as we want it to.
So was your plans on the hydrants, was that all part of this, or was we going to?
We'll still, we'll still be replacing hydrants, but it might not be as many because we're not going to be going into some of the neighborhoods that you're planning on going into.
And how many are we down, hydrants?
Uh, there's 12 that are in operation right now. Out of the 208 that we have.
Any other questions for Mr. Greenwood?
Okay, thanks, Jeremy.
Okay, we'll move on to Police Chief Matt Arvitz. Matt, do you have a report?
Yeah. Good evening, Council. The stats for the month of August. We had 395 calls, complaints that we responded to, eight crashes, 21 arrests, four warrants served, five domestics, and 108 traffic stops. We had an officer last week return from a two-day training class in Columbus for advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement. We have one officer leaving tomorrow for two-day training in Youngstown for red dot site instructor to facilitate our new weapons that we were, that we just got in, which finally, they were all fulfilled today. Earlier today, on a proud note, Lieutenant Stewart recovered a missing juvenile from Lucas County. She'd been missing for a while out of Toledo, and he recovered her on a parking stop. And lastly, proud to announce that for our second year in a row, we were awarded the Lexi Polk Connect Gold Award for Excellence in Law Enforcement Policy Management.
Thank you, Matt. Congratulations on that report also.
Thanks, John.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Mike?
How did the road closure go for the block party?
No issues. Yeah, nobody, nobody had any issues there. Chief, I don't think you guys had any issues on that. No, no, we actually got, received an email from the resident that was putting that together, thanking both police department and fire department for our interaction and participating as well. No, no issues on ours.
Thanks.
Curiosity, like, out of the 108 traffic stops, like, how many of those hit mayor's court?
It depends on who comes in and pays. I mean, usually Jen will tell me, you know, three or four days ahead, there might be 14 or 15 people possibly slated for mayor's court. And the day before, a slew of people usually come in and pay their fines. And so we have, like, five, six.
Typically, the only ones that are required to come to mayor's court are the ones who are under suspension or have some sort of licensing issue like that. If they're valid drivers and they pay their fines, they don't have to come.
Okay. And that's pretty, pretty average? Like, I think last week was it, or last month, like 124 or something? Sounds like pretty average.
Yeah, not every stop winds up with a citation.
Has a citation, okay. Thank you.
But that's still counted as stops, right?
Correct.
Any other questions for the chiefs? Okay, thanks, Chief. Okay, move on to Finance Director, Annette Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I received a letter from our auditors to council and management. The audit engagement of the City of St. Clairsville has been completed, and copies of the draft report will be available for your review in the next few days. These drafts are restricted for official use, and they're being provided to obtain comment from those with the responsibility for the subjects it discusses. So, Council, you should be getting a copy of the audit draft in your mail within a few days.
And that's a draft that's not redistributed?
No, it's confidential.
Okay.
So I wasn't sure if you got it already or not, but evidently you did not, so.
I have not seen.
Yeah, but it is confidential when you receive that. And then, based on, just any discussion concerning the audit, there could possibly be some changes, but usually not. And then I have a piece of legislation. We were running out of some money on some of the appropriations, so I just went through all the line items. And there could be some other changes, but I tried to be concerned it would be good till the end of the year to finish out the year, pay the invoices.
Is that 39?
Yes, 22-39.
And does that need to happen tonight?
It does. Some of the line items, we're running out of funds on. Unless it really isn't unusual, sometimes I kind of divide it out, you know, till the end of the year. But I just went to the end of the year and put everything in there. Might be a little bit extra if we need it. And the money is available. It's just unappropriated money. Because when we do the appropriations, we don't use all the money that's available. So the money is available. I did put another transfer out for $25,000 to the street fund. So that's where the revenue part comes in.
Personal services or salaries?
Yes.
Where's the money coming out of and going into? Because some say transfer out.
Transfer out is the one that goes to the street because the general fund supplements the street.
Okay.
And they didn't have, like, enough extra money just to take it out of that money.
Any other?
And there'd be transfer in to the street as a, as a receipt.
Any other items or transfers in?
No, that's.
Or coming from the money that didn't get appropriated?
It's just the street, from general to the street. I usually put some extra money in there for the transfer out, but I didn't do that this year, so. It's all been used, or transferred out at the beginning of the year.
And the supplemental revenue for the police, it's separate, like, on the second page?
Um, yeah, actually, that's, that's transfers in. Oh, it was the police. I'm sorry, it wasn't the street. That is the transfer out because the general fund supplements the police department. It wasn't the street fund. They did have enough money. But the cost, once again, the cost of things, supplies and everything have went up, so.
Well, I would just think.
It's just to make everybody sure that they can have what they need for the rest of the year.
Chief, I would expect the Ganseline bill for the year was something you wouldn't have been able to predict in January. I mean, that's just one example, like, right? Supplies, materials.
Is the audit report going to be emailed or physically mailed to?
Probably emailed.
Okay.
My email is down today, so I don't know what came in. They're supposed to work on it tomorrow. It could be in there tomorrow, but I will actually email you guys a copy of this letter tomorrow.
So they sent it to you, and then you sent it out, or they're going to send it back?
I thought that they would send it to you, but I will find out tomorrow. That's all we know.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for Finance Director?
Just a reminder for the monthly payment registers from April through August.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions. We'll move on to planning and zoning. Mr. Murphy?
Uh, thanks, Jen. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for appointing and approving Jane Long to the Board of Architecture Review. You probably read in the email I sent you all last Monday that she is a longtime resident of St. Clairsville. She retired as the clerk to the Belmont County Commissioners. And she worked closely with architects, engineers, and contractors. So again, I appreciate that. Second, Trinity, they're starting to submit some of their plans for the new St. Clairsville neighborhood hospital. So we're starting to preliminarily review those. Once they submit what is needed and we have the proper hearing, there's hope that they will have their city approvals by the end of this year. So things are moving forward. They're just locating plants, but that's right, they have a lot of work to do on their end. So it's an exciting project, and I'm looking forward to reviewing it. And any questions you have, feel free to ask.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, we'll move on to the council committees.
I have a question for Elizabeth. I guess she's not going to speak this evening. I have a question. At the last meeting, I had asked about the salary of the new, at the Assistant Rec Director. And we were told that that did not have to come to council.
Right, because that's an administrative position, not a supervisory position.
I understand that, but according to Article 3, Section 8, it says the council shall have the power to fix its own compensation and that of each employee of the city. Now, is there somewhere else in charter that gives an exception to that, or?
Typically, what happens, it's within the salary range. You've already set salaries. And that is, they did not go in, in my understanding, they did not exceed the previous salary. It was within the range. You've already accepted in your annual budget. So you've already set salaries for these positions. So like every time Jeremy hires somebody for the street department, it doesn't come in and say, you know, the salary's going to be this. They know their range.
Okay.
So there was that range for that department, that person, too.
Is that somewhere in charter, or is that just something that?
That has been custom in practice of this body for years. You know, law directors hard before me. It's been a custom in practice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to finance. Mr. Math, do you have a report?
No report. Our next meeting, I thought was the 15th, but down below, the meeting on the 19th? Down here it says on the agenda, September 19th. Is that the next meeting day?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you believe?
Yes.
Do the 19th.
Yes. Okay, the only thing I want to mention is if, if anyone's uncomfortable with this, and we need more questions. Does this have to be passed tonight, 2022-39?
39, the finance one?
Yes. We need it for operational costs.
All right. So I have.
Any other questions, Mike, or anything? Okay. We'll move on to utilities. Jared, do you have a report?
I was not at the meeting tonight, but I'm going to pass it over, but she has a report for us.
So we did meet tonight. The utility committee did meet tonight. Anita will correct you if I may speak. But this is what I think we talked about. We reviewed monthly usage and disconnects and revenue. We also approved SOAR credit from a resident for $82.25. We also grandfathered in, we just passed the opportunity for all the residents of St. Clairsville to take advantage of being on the budget if they qualify. Clairsville to take advantage of being on the budget if they qualified. And in doing that, unbeknownst to the utility committee when we did it, there were a couple people that were on the budget that their landlords would not sign the paper to allow them to stay on the budget. And we just didn't think that was right. I mean, the whole idea was to try to help people, so we didn't want to kick anybody off. So they have good track records as far as paying their bills. So we grandfathered those people in with the same requirements of anybody on the budget, they have to pay their bills, and these are people that always did, so it just didn't make sense. So we're grandfathering them in. It's three or four residents, we'll keep a, you know, an eye, you know, minimal risk to the city, but it seemed like the right thing to do for those residents who were already on the budget. We did grandfather those in. And we also discussed the possibility of a clean water assessment fee that Jeremy and Elizabeth are working on, that we've been doing, smoke testing for the better part of the summer, if not the whole summer, you know, weather related. And a thousand three hundred and forty-one houses have undergone the smoke testing so far, there's been only forty-five issues, so less than three percent. But it's an EPA mandate that you can't have smoke coming out of these things, that it's not a good thing, because water's going into the sewer system that's not supposed to be going there. So those issues have to get addressed. So we've talked about like, so if smoke comes out of your house, right, and it's not a fire, right, it's this thing, right? So we said in a letter saying, you got to fix this, and if you don't fix it within thirty days, this is what we're talking about, assessing, potentially assessing a file. So that'll be continued communications in the utility committee to bring that to council. That was utility. We adjourned at six forty-four. Questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
And then police?
Okay, we'll move on to police. Do you have a report on police?
I do. Now, this is Matt's turn to correct me if I mess this up. We had a police committee meeting after the last council meeting, it was a short meeting, so whenever date that was, it was the last council meeting. Somebody can help me out and you can...
It's August fifteenth.
Okay, first.
Fifteenth.
I'm grabbing it out for you.
It was August fifteenth, it was the last council, a short meeting. What we discussed was really how the police department, yeah, Dawn and Mike were both there, who either knew the date either, I'll just point out, how the police department's spending money that they've gotten from the opiate settlements. And that was the primary discussion. We talked a little bit about the decontamination area, and Chief Hall just talked about the significance of that for the fire employees, right? But same with the police department, too, they're out there, so that we really need to step that area up, decam, you know. Okay, then we talked about the canine odon and possibly using some of that money like maybe for a guest speaker, you know, anti-drug for, you know, our school kids. So that was the primary discussion, that was actually the, the only discussion that we had in the police committee last time. We adjourned at eight twenty-six, and the next meeting for the police committee will be on September nineteenth after the council meeting. Questions on that? All right.
Okay, no questions, thank you, Bill. I will move to Streets Northside, Mr. Vincenzo.
No report.
And Streets Southside, Mr. Frash, no report. And anything on safety?
No report.
Building and ground. Mr. Wood, do you have a report on that?
No.
And planning commission, anything that you want to add to that?
I mentioned about Trinity and ultimately their site plan review, what goes before the planning commissions. So I'll counsel if you were interested in what we do have, you'd be invited, or if you want to contact me or stop in and what we have so far, your policy.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Fire District.
Chief Hall gave a very thorough presentation, and I have nothing to add except to say that the board is unanimously in support of this project. And as Chief has stated, I'd like to reiterate, anybody should go up to the station and have them take you through there, and you'll see just how necessary this is.
Linda, who is the board person from the trustees?
Rick Farrell.
Rick.
Linda, may I add something I forgot? Our ceremonial and valour monument, this Sunday, September eleventh at eleven AM in front of the courthouse, and I apologize, I meant to mention it earlier, you're all invited, and there's a picnic to follow at St. Clair Memorial Park. So I apologize, I meant to mention it earlier.
That's okay, because I was going to, so thank you.
It's all right, I'll shut up there, I apologize.
That's all right, you're okay, boy.
Been a rough night for everybody. Okay, anybody have any questions for Fire District, Linda? Okay, the next item is the recreation, since that is vacant, we've got a few announcements here from Eric, he wasn't able to make it this evening. Fall Festival Saturday, September tenth, four to ten, at the amphitheaters, sponsored by Belmont Savings Bank and Luca Magestro Allstate Insurance. Also, final floors will be coming back next week to touch up the floor of the gymnasium. This was scheduled when they did it, and as part of the package, after six months, they go back and touch up the floors. Fall baseball started last week, four teams in the league. Flag football starts Sunday with a hundred and thirty-eight kids. Volleyball starts next week with sixty kids, and that's all that Eric has there. If anybody has any questions, please contact him.
I have a comment. I think Eric should be commended for thinking the initiative and putting this together. I think it's going to go for the community.
I think Eric's done fine job, he really has, I think he's a very good choice. Okay, we'll move on to Park District. Linda, do you have any?
No report, the park is officially closed.
Okay.
Linda, I do have a question for you, not as law director, but as a resident. On the nature trail at the, in the park, there is a culvert that you have to cross that has been exposed, it's probably due to all the torrential downpours we have, and you probably don't realize it unless you're there all the time, but if you could report that they need to go look at that and...
Well, that's cities.
Yeah.
Now that we actually have many actual plans or to address these issues, they've been brought up before.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To be able to do it.
Yeah, that trail, yes, there is a...
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions, law director, Elizabeth.
Okay, there are three pieces of legislation before council tonight. Twenty-twenty-two, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight have emergency language in them. That is only so after three readings, they'll become immediately effective because we have deadline dates, I believe, of October fourteenth.
That is thirty-seven and thirty-eight?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-seven and twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
Okay.
They're both dealing with applying for grant funding, and there is a deadline to apply for those grants.
So you're, what I'm hearing you say is we can read it three times?
Correct. Resolution twenty-twenty-two, thirty-seven is a resolution authorizing public service director to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission's Natural Resources Assistance Council's Clean Ohio Conservation Fund for grant funds for the acquisition and preservation of property along the National Road Bike Way and declaring an emergency. Like I said, this can be done in three reads, so...
Okay, we'll go with first reading on twenty-twenty-two, thirty-seven. Jacob?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-two, thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing the public service director to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission's Natural Resource Assistance Council of Clean Ohio Conservation Fund for grant funds for the acquisition and preservation of property along the National Road Bike Way and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading.
Yeah, I just have some more questions, it's the first time we've seen it, right? So I can ask questions here?
Correct, yes.
This is the time to ask a couple of questions on this?
Sure.
Okay, so section three, that the purchase of land adjacent to the National Road Bike Way is a high priority, so that will be part of this?
Yes.
Is the possibility of purchasing land to expand?
Not necessarily to expand, but to preserve.
Okay.
But this is just to, so that he can apply these grants.
Apply for grants to purchase the property.
Right, but that's what some of the grant money would be used for, is what, right? Okay.
It's okay, I'm just saying, apply these grants, I don't see why not.
Because there's no deadline to, that we have to do it tonight, right?
No, there is a deadline, October fourteenth.
October fourteenth to apply for the grant.
But you're still working on the grant, right? Like, us not approving it tonight doesn't mean that you're not...
Correct.
Figure it out, there's nothing to say.
And that's what she was saying, there could be three readings for both of them.
So he can then submit the grants.
But I need to be, I can't wait to thirty days, I can have three readings, but I can't wait to thirty days.
That's why it's got a burden.
That's why it's got a burden.
Automatically goes into effect.
Yeah, as long as it's not interfering with us getting grant money, and I'm not hearing anything.
No, it's not interfering with us getting the grant money.
But I'm good with just this being the first reading.
I just have this thing about grants, I'm saying, if it's a grant, let's do it.
Well, I mean, that's up to council, if you want to do it as an emergency tonight, that's fine, too.
I'm okay to wait, but you can make the motion.
We've had the first reading, does anyone wish to take any further action since it does have emergency language in? Okay, hearing nothing, so we will not go any further. Okay, we will now go to twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight.
And this is a resolution authorizing the public service director to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for grant funds for the acquisition of native trees for city property and declaring emergency. This is basically a grant to purchase trees to replace some that have been...
All right, so one for one grant, whatever we put into it, up to twenty-five thousand, that will match.
What do we think we'll put in it?
Put on that inch. I haven't decided. I mean, this kind of depends on what area, we were thinking more along the stuff down by the train station in that area, so I mean, we can easily put, you know, twenty-five thousand in, we're just going to have to watch the budgets and see where we're at.
Like, how much is a tree? Twenty-five thousand seems like a lot to me.
Trees are a lot, you could get four or five hundred dollars for a tree, depending on how big it is.
I mean, so figure it out, how much you're going to put into it, I mean, that's where we're weighing, like, South Park, or this project, or this project, that we can't do everything we wanted to do because of the increase, so...
Well, I've got a deadline, so it's the same thing, it's grant money, it's just to make a determination of what we're willing to spend to go with the match.
So, and us doing a first reading tonight doesn't stop us from getting grant money, it's going to, but that allows you to come back to us with the amount of money that you think the city wants, and you don't have that number right now.
Nope.
I have a question, I mean, going back to the first, will we miss that on the fifteenth? Our third reading will be the seventeenth one.
So this is the first reading, next one is...
You have the twentieth, and then you'll have...
Next reading, then the seventeenth.
Nineteenth.
Well, then we can do it next month.
Third of October, you have the nineteenth of September, the third of October.
There's one more in September. Yeah, we've got one more in September.
Okay, okay.
And then you have...
So, and then the third of October, first of October, so two, so that is one for one.
Just want to make sure we didn't miss that.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now have the second reading of twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing the public service director to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for grant funds for the acquisition of native trees for city property and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading on twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight. So we'll now move to twenty-twenty-two, thirty-nine.
And this is the last piece of legislation before you tonight, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-nine, it's an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations and revenues for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period of January first, twenty-twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and declaring an emergency. And this one does need to be, as right as an emergency tonight, so that, and that can move the money, she needs to move.
What is, would other supplies and materials, forty thousand dollars, what is that?
That would be an imminent question.
That's supplies and materials, that's like, that could be like fuel, anything that's considered, like, which one are you looking at?
On the back of thirty-nine, on the back, it's the...
Electric grid.
Third of down.
The water, actually, that's for chemicals.
Chemicals.
And we weren't actually planning on having the water department, I don't think, for...
Yes.
For the whole year, so...
What's the training services?
That's any training that the guys need.
And there's also continuing and some other trainings that they have...
If they go get their licenses, too.
Do we have any more questions on twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight?
Thirty-nine.
I'm sorry, thirty-nine. Okay, at this time, we will read for the first time, twenty-twenty-two, thirty-nine.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-two, thirty-nine, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations and revenue for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January first, twenty-twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this is the first reading, this is a piece of legislation that they are requesting be passed as emergency, so at this time, does anyone wish to take any further action on this piece of legislation?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances, resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? We will now take a vote to see if this will be considered emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion to go back into regular session. And a second, roll call.
Butler?
Here, yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
All members are open.
Okay, we're back in the regular session. First of all, there, at this point, there's been no action or decision made in the executive session. Can everyone check their calendars for a special meeting on Monday?
I can do Monday, I can't choose any ones.
Okay, Monday would be okay for you? Linda, would you be okay for Monday?
I don't know, Terrick, you tell me.
What, do you have a, the game?
Oh, the game?
Yeah.
Got you.
I have my written calendar in my car.
Twelve.
I believe I'm here.
I believe I'm here.
Six o'clock, okay, is it too early for people?
Six o'clock, be great.
Okay. Six o'clock, okay? Mike, six o'clock, okay, Monday?
Yep.
Okay, hang on, we don't have Dawn.
I'm good, Monday.
Six, is that too early, is that?
No, six, five.
Okay, is J.C. just?
Okay, Monday will be the twelfth.
J.C.'s to work.
Seven.
Is everyone good for Monday the twelfth?
You do have one?
I don't know, I'm trying to figure out. I have two trips in this month, and I can't remember the dates of it. Thought I took pictures of it, but I didn't know. I'm texting.
Yeah, be drunk.
I think I kind of started everybody off with malfunctioning with this reading.
You're good?
Yeah, thirteen, so, good.
It's in T.A.
Monday the twelfth, okay?
Twelve, six o'clock.
Monday the twelfth at six o'clock, is anybody okay with that?
Yes.
Monday is six to twelve.
I'm Monday the twelfth.
Monday the twelfth, six.
Literally, absolutely, you.
Dawn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting, right?
Is that gonna?
Monday is six to twelve.
At this point in time, we do have to announce to the public that the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be September nineteenth. At seven PM, that's the regularly scheduled meeting, and we will have a special meeting Monday at six o'clock to announce the decision on the third board council. We will, can, we are going to have council the Thursday, the, the meeting Thursday night, where notify the press that there will be a special meeting on Monday to make that decision.
And the meeting on Thursday is canceled, the meeting on Thursday is canceled.
Will be canceled, we'll cancel that, notify the, I prefer to put it on the website. Uh, and we can also, Robert's got that here, he can put it in the newspaper that, uh, we will get a press release out officially that there will be a special meeting held on Monday at six o'clock to make the appointment, the vote on the appointment for third board council. And we will counsel, cancel the appointment for the meeting, because it's Thursday. And everybody is available on Monday.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, six o'clock Monday. At this time, we got that pretty much ironed out, we'll take a motion to adjourn.